Okay, good evening all and welcome. This is the April 2nd, kind of a special calling of the Board of Selectmen. All members of the Board are present. We are just concluding. We're a little behind schedule in our start time, so my apologies for those of you who were waiting. Appreciate your patience. We were in executive session for the purpose of discussing the purchase, exchange, lease, or value of real property at 333 Yandover Street in accordance with Mass General Laws, Chapter 30A, Section 21A, subsection 6, as an open meeting may have detrimental effect on the town's position. If I could invite everyone to stand and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
(inaudible)
We have no Treasury warrants to approve and no minutes to approve at this meeting, so we'll jump right into our, I guess, our scheduled 7 o'clock appointment, which is really a Board discussion with regards to the potential acquisition of property on 333 Yandover Street, commonly known as Sharapa Farm. So, I don't know, Jeff, did you have a vision as to how that conversation should go? Do you want to jump right into Board to Consider, because it's kind of, those are enveloped in this, or is it, I wasn't, as I was looking at the agenda for tonight, I thought, geez, you know, that the Board to Consider items are really embedded into the appointment, but we can certainly have a separate discussion on the appointment if you think that's merited.
I don't think it's necessary. Certainly if members of the Board have particular comments with regard to the prospect of purchasing the property or acquiring the property, this would be the time to do it. Otherwise, the issues before the Board tonight are really to essentially take a vote, as was taken at the last meeting, for the purpose of pursuing an article at a special town meeting to acquire the property, that being one action. As you know, there's a petition article before the Board seeking a special town meeting, which I would recommend be, if in fact the Board decides to go with a special for the purpose of the Sharapa property, that the petition article be on the same special town meeting warrant. And then finally, if the Board so decides to call a special town meeting, I would recommend that you vote to open the warrant this evening for purposes of those who may want to petition articles, and then vote to close the warrant on Friday, this coming Friday, so that we can meet the timeline. We are under a very tight timeline in order to get the various notice requirements met by and before the May 5th meeting.
Thank you. I was negligent. I'm just going to pause the operations here very briefly. You might notice that each of us at this front table, as well as Beverly, are wearing an item of blue, and that is in recognition of April being Autism Awareness Month, and we will be doing that at each of our meetings this month, and also want to express gratitude to the anonymous donor who donated the lenses for the Town Common. Those of you that drive by Town Common will notice that the lights on Common are glowing blue in a where, in reflection of Autism Awareness Month. So forgive me for not having that before we started. So it's the pleasure of the Board here to, we can have an active discussion, really just about people's attitudes, or the appetite for acquiring 333 Yandover Street, or we can jump into the Board to Consider, the special town meeting, and the request of Mr. McCoy. So I leave it to your pleasure.
Mr. Chairman. I'll chime in. Last week when I voted for this special town meeting, I was all for buying the property at Sharapa Farm. I still am. And in my excitement, I voted for it. I am going to change my vote tonight because we have the word eminent domain as part of the buying process, and I feel that I wouldn't want my land taken. So that's the reason why I'm not going to, if it goes forward, vote if it has the word eminent domain in the article.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I mean, I'll just get the show on the road. I'm going to make a motion in a moment, but I don't think that we're stealing any property from anybody, number one. If we go through the eminent domain process, we have Town Council that can explain it to us if necessary. I don't believe that we're going to go in there by eminent domain and pay the assessed value of $700,000 and change. What we're going to do is, we're going to go through the process, we're going to acquire and hire an unbiased, third-party professional appraiser to go in there. He's not going to say, it's one house, one lot, it's assessed at $750,000. He's going to look at it, it's an R60, and I would expect to pay whatever the R60 is. If there's 30, 35, 40 house lots, he's going to give us that value, and that's what we are going to pay. We are not going to steal it from the Sharapa family, plain and simple. We're not going to do that. It's not going to happen. People need to realize that. We're going to pay market value based upon 62.5 acres, zone R60. You folks do the math, we can do the math and determine how many house lots, and that's going to be the value the appraiser's going to go. And it's going to be, I'm not going to even give a price. That's one thing. As far as going on the town meeting floor, you know, you need to show a public good for that, any municipal use. You can put a category of many things, and we can do that and offer that. It's not like we don't know what we're doing. You can legally do that on the town meeting floor and say, this is for the public good relative to eminent domain. We're going to talk about multiple municipal uses. There's talk about shortage of cemetery. There's other property in the community that if we had to relocate a facility, because we need to put a cemetery there, then we can relocate that facility on Sharapa's farm. So we have multiple things that we can do. It's a covenant of multiple things. Talk about maybe Ipswich River Park, something similar to North Reading. You know, I think there's 20 acres out there, we're going to have 70 acres out here. So the bottom line is, there's a huge umbrella what we can do, and we're doing it for the public good. Now, I'm not going to go into the technicality about breaks or anything, taxes. All I'm saying is, and I've got a record here, it's not like, and I asked the town manager for this, and I'll share this with folks, we've taken property by eminent domain before, but we're not like, going to go in your neighborhood and steal your property. That's not going to happen. That won't happen. In the history of the community, the town manager gave to me this, we've taken three properties by eminent domain. Back in 1975, we took 154 acres, the town forest. On Salem Street, back in, don't even have a date here, I don't see it.
98, I believe.
All right, that's fine. Back in 1998, 1998, Mr. Manager, on Salem Street, we ended up taking by eminent domain, 73 acres. And then, I'm very familiar with this one, on Wildwood Street. Remember, we had that motorcycle gang that, on Wildwood Street, there was property, the Murphy property? We ended up taking that property by eminent domain back in 1998.
That was the 98, the Salem Street, I think it was in the 70s, but I don't have an exact date.
We don't have the exact, it was somewhere in the 70s. So we have taken it, and we're not the boogeyman that's going to steal your property. It's not going to happen. I wouldn't want that to happen, but sometimes you need to do things for the public good. This is for the public good. This is for municipal use. I don't know how much more I can say. I wouldn't want anybody to steal my property, absolutely not. And we're not going to go into any neighborhood, we're not going to go to any business and say, we're the town of Wilmington, we're the government, we're stealing your property. Ain't going to happen. We're doing it for the public good, plain and simple, and, you know, that's how I'm feeling. I'll make a motion, Mr. Chairman, to expedite this, if that's what we need to do. And if that, I'm willing to make the motion when you want, other members can weigh in, but that's how I feel. I feel that we go in full throttle, we do what we need to do, and it's for the public good. You know, sometimes you need to call it a ball and a strike. I know where I'm wanting, what I would like to do. And it's not against Mr. Walsh, not against the Sharapa family. I even said at the last meeting, the Sharapa family wonderful people. I'm sure they did everything right, but we're looking at the big ball here. I think this is for the public good, and that's why we're doing it. That's why I think we should do it.
Thank you, Mr. McCoy. Mr. Carr, do you have anything you want to share at this time, or?
We'll be in discussion once there's a motion, so.
No, I would like to see the town purchase the property as well. It's not the first time that the town has tried to purchase the property. It's probably about the fourth time, or third or fourth time. But with Mr. Loud announcing his change in vote, I don't see this passing at this point in time. It's, the way I add up the votes from last meeting to this meeting now with the change, it would be two to two, so it wouldn't go anywhere. So this is just, this is all for naught right now, so.
Well, you're being presumptuous about my vote.
Okay, I guess I am.
Okay. I thank you for that. So, Mr. McCoy, the ball is in your court here.
I'll make a motion, and I know I have a tendency to repeat myself. I want to make it clear, there's no ill will. Sharapa family, beautiful, wonderful people, and I went to school with some of them. We're not stealing it. Get that out of your mind right now, because I think people out there would like to put a spin on this. We are not, we are not stealing it. Being that said, I already said what I had to say. I'd like to make a motion, and I'll read the article, it's only three sentences. I move that the Wilmington Board of Selectmen, if you want to help me, Mr. Manager, I know we're going to be calling a special town meeting unless, should I call for the special town meeting first to do this, or should I just put this out first, and then we're going to establish a town meeting?
I think you can seek to call a special town meeting.
For this purpose, all right. You know, I move that, well, you're going to be calling a special town meeting in a moment, so, and I'm just, all right, I'd move that the Board of Selectmen are going to be, well, you're going to be making that in the next one, calling for the special town meeting.
Well, the Board can either choose to call your own town meeting for the purpose of taking up this article, or?
All right, okay, I just want to be clear, all right, because, all right, I move that the Wilmington Board of Selectmen call a special town meeting within the town meeting of, Beverly, if you could help me, I think it's May 5th of 2018, and obviously, relative to the special town meeting, that the special town meeting be before the annual town meeting, as stated. I move the town to see if the town will vote and raise and appropriate, comma, transfer from available funds, comma, or borrow pursuant to any applicable status, statute, comma, a sum of money for the Board of Selectmen to acquire by purchase, comma, gift or eminent domain to following real estate commonly known as the Sharapa Farms. Before I make that as an official motion, I want folks to know, when they say about a dollar amount, we can always offer a dollar amount, and we can do a lot of things on the floor. We can make amendments, we can state the reason why. If it does go eminent domain, we have time on our hands to go out and do it right. I want people to realize that. I make that in the form of a motion, Mr. Chairman.
I'll accept it as a made motion. Is there a second on the floor? Is there a second on the floor? One last try. Is there a second for Mr. McCoy's motion?
We'll second it.
We have it seconded, and that is for discussion. Is there discussion on the motion made that has been seconded?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
If this does not pass, do, we can still negotiate with the family, correct? To try to, try to purchase this land? We directed, we directed the manager a few meetings ago to do such things, so we can still do that, correct?
I'm certainly of the mind, and I'll let Jeff, Fandor, or anybody else that wants to offer their voice on this. This article doesn't preclude the town from reaching out to and trying to negotiate with the owners of this property now or at any time, you know? So it doesn't, you know, I guess what, and correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. McCoy, but I get the spirit of this article to be to really go to the town meeting and the residents at town meeting, the voters at town meeting, and ask them, to really get them to indicate whether or not they, whether or not the voters of the town of Wilmington have an appetite for pursuing the acquisition of this property by whatever means, including eminent domain.
Yes, sir, and if I can elaborate for a quick second, Mr. Chairman?
All right.
I mean, I think the bottom line is this, I don't think we're going to be successful sitting down with the Sharapa family or other parties at all, anyway. I think we need to support the motion, go forward, and I just have a memo here that the town manager, March 16th, there was, he had offered certain dates, March 27, 3:30, March 28, 3:30, or March 30, 1:30 p.m., Attorney Crowley, and to be, and to see if he was available. Attorney Crowley is available to attend on any of those meetings. Did he confirm that he would initially meet us, and now he's decided not to?
Well, I think there was an initial expression that he might be inclined to meet, yes.
Yeah, so he was willing to sit down and meet, but now he's not going to?
Well, let me be clear, so I think, I need to clarify amongst both parties at this point, both Mr. Crowley, who is the attorney representing one member of the family, and Attorney Demento, who is a attorney representing the other part of the family, exactly what their status is right now. There's been, I don't want to mischaracterize their intentions. I think there was some indication amongst one of the parties early on that their desire was to see the outcome of the vote at town meeting, but again, I think I need to follow up with them and confirm what their intentions are at this point, if there's a willingness on their part to have conversations with the town. I mean, I think it's pretty clear, based upon the letter to the editor that Mr. Crowley submitted, that there's a measure of concern about the way, the tenor of the conversation about this property, without getting into details, I mean, he can certainly speak for himself, but with that being said, I think I need to reach out to both attorneys again to see if there's interest in having a conversation about the property.
All right, I made the motion. I think without the eminent domain process, we actually have no teeth in this at all, and it's just going to run its course. I set it up, Mr. Chairman.
There you go. I want to go on record and say that I'm not opposed to these conversations with representatives from Sharapa. I'm not even opposed to the town acquiring the property at some future date if that, if that opportunity presents itself. I would potentially be in favor of it as a resident if the price was right, and if the purpose was sound, and those two factors would be very, very important to me. The idea of acquiring the property, just because there's no, I heard that referred to last week, that, you know, God's not making any more open space, and we ought to just avail ourselves of every opportunity to acquire open space. That's not a sufficient purpose for me, in my, me as a voter. And so, you know, ultimately, as we go forward, whether it's with this article or at any future conversations, the price tag has to be the right price tag, and the purpose has to be the right purpose. And I hope that every resident factors those appropriately as well. So I'm not opposed to pursuing this avenue and pursuing conversations with the Sharapas if that presents itself, but I am, I will state on the record, I am opposed to creating a special town meeting specifically to, for that purpose. I believe that the, that there are, I think it's a manipulation of the parliamentary process at this point in the game, and we don't really need that article in order to pursue those conversations. I know we're going to have a special town meeting anyway for the other purpose that you've indicated, Mr. McCoy, so, you know, that it is what it is. We'll schedule that special town meeting, and we'll engage in the conversations that are necessary, but I don't support the need for a special time meeting for this purpose at this time. So that's where I come down on, at least my opinion on this. Did you have something?
Yes, if, if the Board is going to consider scheduling a special town meeting for the purpose of acquiring the property, I would suggest that the special town meeting, that the motion referenced that the special town meeting would take place within the annual town meeting. As was noted at the last Board of Selectmen's meeting, there certainly is precedent for the town having conducted specials within the annual. It was done, from my experience, back in the late 80s and perhaps into the early 90s. So my suggestion is, clearly, it's known at this point that we have an annual town meeting that starts at 10:30. I believe it would be best to get the special within the annual, it could be taken up after the Article II, which is the article that calls for reports to be given, and then the town could suspend, moderator could suspend the annual town meeting to go into a special town meeting, take up the matters at the special, adjourn that special, and then go back into the annual.
Thank you. Mr. McCoy, would you amend your motion to include the schedule for the, operating the special town meeting inside of the scheduled annual town meeting in the manner of the town manager just?
I don't have a point to do that, but I just want to ask a quick question, maybe Town Council or Manager can answer me. If we do that, is it cotton-stone that the special town meeting will take place after Article II, and then we go into annual town meeting? That's what I'm hearing.
That would be my expectation, yes, and I would certainly have that conversation with the moderator at the time.
All right, great. I incorporate this part, that part of the motion, Mr. Chairman, as described by the town manager. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Carr, would you still second it, given that?
Same language.
Yes.
So I still have a made motion that's been revised and a second to that. I would say that we are still in discussion if there's a need to be so. Mr. Loud?
Nope.
So, very well. I guess I'll call for the vote. All in favor of the motion that Mr. McCoy just made, indicate by raising your hand. I have one. Two, all those opposed to the motion made by Mr. McCoy, two. And I have one abstain. So two does not carry the day. A majority would be necessary. So we are not calling a special town meeting for purpose of acquiring Sharapa Farm. That doesn't mean, well, I guess, it just means that we're not scheduling a special town meeting for that purpose. So thank you for that, gentlemen. Thank you for the discussion. I think it was fruitful. Special, I'm sorry, special. Board to Consider item number seven is to consider calling a special town meeting within the annual town meeting for Saturday, May 5th, at the Wilmington High School Auditorium in response to a petition calling for a special town meeting to consider zoning changes to the Wilmington zoning bylaws. Mr. Hall, I will ask you to summarize the nature of this petition if I could, and then I guess we'll engage in conversation about it.
This petition, which has been the requisite number of signatures, 200-plus signatures have been reviewed and signed off by the town clerk, seeks to revise the zoning bylaws of the town by removing from neighborhood mixed use the section that permits multifamily uses within the neighborhood mixed use district. It also seeks to remove and revise the zoning bylaws as they relate to the central business district by removing, again, multifamily use, and then further to amend the use table that addresses those particular uses.
Mr. McCoy, you are the, I guess, the spearhead behind this article, is that correct?
Yes.
And you have your signatures. Do you want to speak to it at this time?
Well, I don't think, I don't think I should be able to speak to it, obviously, just like relative to the detox. We're only here to call. It is a citizen-driven petition. It is a citizen-driven petition. I don't feel comfortable talking about it right here. I don't think it's necessary, just like relative to the detox. The whole purpose of the Board of Selectmen is to just call a special town meeting. All that discussion will take place at the Planning Board Public Hearing slash FinCom, and that's how the history of the town has always been, so it's just a vote before the Board to call a special town meeting.
Very well, thank you, sir. And I would, frankly, I would concur with you. I have a lot to say on the nature of the article itself. I will reserve my comments for the joint hearing of Planning Board and Finance Committee, so I agree that the responsibility we have this evening is to respond to the petition and the signatures on this petition, to call the special town meeting. So I would, anyone else is certainly willing to chime in on this subject if they feel so inclined? Go right ahead, Mr..
I'm just glad that, yeah, I tend to agree with both of my colleagues that we ought to respect the wishes of the residents, and just like we did in the fall, I think it was unanimous vote that we all voted for the special town meeting to take place in there. At that time, folks could voice their opinions on the matter, but I think we should respect the will of the residents who signed the petition and move forward with the special town meeting, and then certainly it can be taken up at the joint meeting and then the town meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Bendel. Anybody else? I would, I'd be looking for a motion for someone to accept and schedule the special town meeting.
That's be the same language that was prior? That's the town manager stated?
We forgot the schedule and where it would fit, you mean?
I would certainly recommend that the same, that the special be scheduled within the annual.
And that Article II, I believe, the same format, like you stated, so it'd be first, okay.
So, I'm sorry, Mr. McCoy, are you formulating a motion? Are you looking for someone else to do so?
I'm not formulating a motion, I'm just talking to the manager.
Is there someone else that would like to offer a motion on this?
I'll make a motion that we grant the request of the residents, move forward with the special town meeting.
And I'm going to ask you to specify that you would, you would schedule that special town meeting after Article II, which is the reading of reports and committee reports. We would suspend regular annual town meeting and move into the special town meeting. Is that?
So specified.
Thank you. I'll accept that as a made motion. Is there a second?
No, second not.
That's seconded. Is there discussion on that? I see none. Make sure there's no, there's no discussion? Very well. All in favor of calling a special town meeting, as Mr. Bendel made the motion for, indicate. Four and opposed? One abstain. So four carries it. We will have a special town meeting currently for purposes of discussing the zoning article as indicated. So, what changes to the zoning?
What time and date?
This will all be taking place on the scheduled annual town meeting, which is, forgive me?
May 5th.
May 5th. The annual town meeting will begin promptly at 10:30, or God willing, as soon as we have a quorum, we will dispense with the, not dispense with, but we will navigate through the first couple of articles, and then we will begin, or we will transition out of annual town meeting and transition into the scheduled special town meeting. Dispense with the duties and the tasks of the special town meeting, close that, move it aside, and re-engage with the annual town meeting. So again, this will begin at 10:30 on May 5th.
This is a point of order, pursuant to the Mass General Laws in calling for a meeting and advertising it. I believe you have to have a specific time that the meeting is. The other concern, after talking to the Secretary of State's office the other day, that there's an issue with voter registration.
Mr. Chairman, can I say, can we just get through this, and then obviously, under public comments, Mr. McDonald can make comments, because obviously, there's, you know, Town Council's here.
With all due respect, Mr. McCoy, this is a point of order, because in order to get through the article, you have to have a specific time legally to advertise that meeting. So if you're saying, after we get through this article or whatever, you don't know what time you're going to get through that article.
We're starting the annual town meeting at 10:30. The special town meeting, as we just, the motion was just made to start the special town meeting inside of the annual town meeting, as soon as we dispense with, I guess, Article II, that the reading of reports. I don't know. Lou, I'm sorry, is that, is that sufficient for Attorney General purposes?
That's sufficient, that's how it's done everywhere.
I take, I take Town Council's advice on that, so thank you very much, Mr. McDonald.
Secretary of State?
Yes. You're not the Secretary of State.
I just said I was, I said I was at the office.
Okay. Great, I'm sure they would delight it. So we have dispensed with that, forgive me. So, I'm sorry, we need to formally open the warrant for special town meeting for May 5th and schedule the closing of the warrant for the petition articles. We would, Jeff is suggesting we close the petition article opportunity on Friday, April 6th, at the end of business. So Jeff, I don't know if you want to specify that?
Yes, it's my recommendation that the warrant be closed by this coming Friday, so that we can meet the various publishing deadlines that are necessary in order for us to stay on track, to have this special town meeting for the May 5th annual town meeting, or within the annual town meeting. So one of the prominent deadlines here is the town, the Planning Board Finance Committee hearing, which is scheduled based upon this arrangement for the 25th of April. That has to be posted two consecutive weeks in the town crier, the first posting being at least 14 days prior to the public hearing, so that would have to be posted in the town crier's April 11th edition, so as a consequence, the Board would need to have the warrant and be prepared to sign off on it at your meeting on April 9th. And so, given all of those requirements, closing it on Friday, the 6th, is my recommendation.
Thank you, Jeff. Questions from the Board here? So you would be looking for a motion to open the warrant effective this evening and to close it, the close of business on Friday, the 6th?
Yes.
Unless there's questions or comments, I'd accept a motion to what I just said.
So moved.
Second.
It's made and seconded. Discussion on that? Seeing none. All in favor? Unanimous. Oh, I'm sorry, four?
I'll abstain.
You're going to abstain again. So four and one abstain. Thank you. That's dispenses with the scheduled business. Here we go. Public comments. Going once. So, I'm sorry, yes. Yes, yeah, of course. Lou, thank you. Thank you for being here. Thank you. Public comments. Anybody, anybody at all? Public comments. Crazy hands. Go ahead, raise the hands. Anyone at all? Mr. McDonald.
Kind of held out a little disrespect.
I know, I'm sorry.
Yeah, just have some information if you can, just a second to get it. I guess the first question, I have a couple of questions, but the first question that I have is relative to the trash contract. The last meeting, you voted to pay the contractor additional funds for trash pickup, and my question is, how were you able to do that without the authority of town meeting allowing you to budget for that?
Do you want to- We will look to find either use money within the budget to the extent we have it, or if the funds are not available within the current budget, look for transfers at the annual town meeting as we do every year.
Have you actually taken that vote and that's, that contract and signed it with that trash company yet? Or are you still waiting to get all the legal opinions before you engage in that contract?
There hasn't been any modification to the contract yet, no.
So you haven't entered into that agreement yet?
It would be a-
Legally binding, signed up, been all of that?
It would be a modification to the existing agreement, no. We have not done that yet.
The other question that I have is, I put in a public record request for the amount of retirees and beneficiaries that the town is paying pensions to, but more specifically, the amount of money that the town is paying for these employee health benefits. The list that I got, there were 476 people on the list. But one of the most disturbing things about it was, when I went down the list, there were people on that list that are deceased. And so, the question is, what type of safeguards does the town have if benefits are being paid to somebody that's deceased? For example, with hearing the news that children of people have been cashing checks or using their benefits. And so, it just seems to be the need for a little more oversight there. When I put in a public record request recently, and then it comes back that there are people on that list that are deceased. So, Mr. Bendel, maybe you could answer that. Have you looked into this at all, or?
No, I have not. Been focused on other issues.
Okay. Has anybody, is there any kind of watchdog department or group out there that makes sure that our monies aren't being paid to deceased members?
Well, first of all, I'd like to respond. You know, it's interesting, Mr. McDonald, that you always choose to try to engage in this catch-me-if-you-can approach. Like any resident, you could certainly, you're entitled to make public records requests. I think the appropriate thing to do is if there's something that sparks your interest to actually have a conversation outside of the public media, and rather than playing this surprise-me game, simply ask the question of one of us, and I'm sure we'd be able to come up with an answer. In this particular case, I don't know, for example, if the beneficiary of that deceased person is receiving that benefit. That very well could be the case, that in fact, the name of the person that you happen to identify has been deceased, but their husband or wife is still receiving the benefit which they're duly entitled to. Instead, you try to suggest that they were, that there's some kind of a conspiracy going on. But we can certainly look at the names that you've identified and determine what the circumstances are.
The actual total of retirees and beneficiaries according to the public record request was 476. That included retirees and beneficiaries, because I wanted to be specific on it, because I tend to have the response from you, Mr. Hall, that I'm always trying to play catch-me or my facts are not right. But when my facts come directly from the town hall, I would hope that they are accurate. The amount of employees that the town has is 912. So combining the employees with the retirees and beneficiaries, I got a count of 1,388 people. And so the town is self-insured for employee health benefits. The disturbing thing is, is that this stock loss insurance deductible keeps going up. And you said at the previous FinCon meeting that the deductible is $175,000 for stock loss insurance. So the town does not collect a single penny unless an individual claim goes over $175,000. And the enormous amount of money that's being paid to the stock loss insurance company has to raise the simple question is, is that a sweetheart deal? And to be honest with you, why am I bringing this up? You people are the selectmen that get voted in to be the watchdogs. Why are you guys not having this as an agenda item?
Mr. McDonald, you've brought this for the last 20 years, and the answer remains the same. This is not a unique process that municipalities engage in. We are self-insured, which means we are responsible for paying claims from dollar one. Just as with any other insurance policy that you might get, you might typically get a deductible because it reduces your overall cost. We have a population of employees and beneficiaries that are insured. Based upon advice from a firm that we use that knows the market, we have concluded that it is appropriate to have a deductible of $175,000 per claim. We could say we don't want any deductible, and we're going to get insurance from dollar one, and the cost would be much higher. There have been some years where the town has actually received more in reimbursements than we have paid out in premium. The problem with that is that the following year, typically, the insurance cost goes up, because insurance companies are not in the business of losing money. So $175,000 has been the limit for, I believe, at least the last two years, maybe longer, and it is not something that is unique to municipalities. Contact any number of other communities across the state that are self-insured, and you will find a very similar model. So this constant insistence that we're somehow messing with people is just absolutely fictitious.
The thing that you failed to mention is that this particular item is outside the constraints of procurement laws. In other words, the town does not have to put this off a competitive bid. And so, I would like the Board to take a look at this and start thinking about putting it off a competitive bid. And, I mean, Mr. Hall, quite honestly, you're being paid more than the governor of the state of Massachusetts. And I think it's excessive. I was appalled to hear this, but to give you the benefit of the doubt, if you're being paid more than the governor of the state of Massachusetts, I would think that you would go the extra mile and start putting things off a competitive bid, even if you're not constrained on particular issues with procurement laws, like the trash law, like the trash contract.
Thank you, Mr. McDonald. You've got ample amount of public comments from you tonight, sir. No, well, Mr. McDonald, are you content with your response?
We have obtained quotes on reinsurance in the past. Do we do it every year? I don't know that we necessarily do it every year, but we certainly have done that. But anything I say, quite honestly, is not going to be satisfactory.
Sufficient. Yes, Mr. West.
Hi, good afternoon or good evening. Frank West, Two Burchard Road. Three, Mr. Chairman, I was just curious if I could ask Selectman Bendel why he abstained from the vote, and just curious, because it was more or less a swing vote one way or the other, and if that's a fair question to ask, if you can comment on that.
I'm happy to answer that. Yeah. So, a few weeks back, when I saw that this was going to be on the town meeting warrant, I approached Town Council, and he's advised me to abstain for, simply for the fact that my family, my wife and I are looking to do some home improvements at my home, and one of the three prices that we got were from the Welch Family Company.
Thank you.
Thank you. To be determined.
Anybody else?
Hold on, sorry. I'm in.
Okay.
Real quick, control. Mr. McCoy?
Yeah, I'm sorry, Mike.
Oh, so I have to go to you?
No, you can just say your name and your address for the record, please. I want to be informed, we're going to be-
Michael Welch, 42 Cottage Street, Wilmington, Mass. Recently started advocating for seniors and seniors, right? And we're all trying to do that. But nevertheless, just quickly, on the land, what is the plan for the land? We seem to have taken a lot of land and open space and created many subdivisions over the last 20 years, ton of open space, which obviously we needed it, and we should be proud of that whole team, and they got their job done. But I don't feel that that same aggressiveness was put towards the diverse housing stock this town still needs horribly right now. So if, say, the Sharapa farm, if the people decide to buy it, what is your plan if Sharapa doesn't happen, or even the rezoning to eliminate all multifamily zoning or whatever you're going with? What is your plan to satisfy the need of this diverse housing stock this town desperately needs?
I'll stick with one topic, one topic only. Sharapa Farm, a vote was taken, and it didn't pass. That's all I'm going to say. I don't know what else I can add to it. I can't say what's going to go there or not. The vote was taken, and it didn't pass. That's all I can say.
Disregarding Sharapa Farm.
No, I'm just sticking with Sharapa Farms. I'm saying this, I'm not here to debate you.
I'm not asking for a bid, it's a question. You want to eliminate the only multi-zoning we have in the whole town?
And once again, I stated earlier, in the Board of Selectmen, in its wisdom, took a vote to call a special town meeting. That, as you noticed, the town manager, and I'll put my glasses on, any discussion will take place at the Planning Board slash FinCon Public Hearing, and that's the due place. Not here. We took a vote, and so I can speak at that meeting. That's it. I'll be there. I'll be happy to say what I need to say.
Ms. Sullivan.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to clarify the record a little bit. I don't think that the town's been aggressive in purchasing open space. Since I've been here since 1989, the only open space that I know of was the eminent domain taking the ball fields on Wildwood Street and Yentile Farms. That's the only land that I know of that the town bought.
Suzanne, I just, I know you came in a little late, but the Yentiles, we didn't take that by eminent domain, it was a purchase agreement. Evidently, if you want me to say, Mr. Chairman, I can state it right here. The town has taken eminent domain, the Town Forest back in 1975 for $169,000. Salem Street was taken somewhere in the 70s, and then obviously the Wildwood Street, that was taken in 1998. So the town has taken eminent domain three times.
And we did, just, I'm not sure I heard you right. We did acquire Yentile, but we also acquired property around St. Dorothy's.
But that's not open space. That's for municipal purposes, for building or tunnel. That's not open space. So what I'm talking about is open space. Since I've lived here since 1989, and I moved, you know, moved here, and I was, I served on the open space committee, the only land that we've really bought is for ball fields. We haven't bought any passive open space.
Town Forest.
The Town Forest was before I moved here. All right, it was in 1979. And it's a nice parcel of land, you know, don't get me wrong. It's nice, it's just a combination, but it'd be nice if the town could buy something for the residents. So, and I would propose that if the town doesn't, if the Board of Selectmen's aren't interested in the Sharapa's farm family, is there anything that you are interested in buying for the town for open space? Because I'm pretty sure that's like the last piece. So if you're not interested in that, I don't know what you would be interested in.
Thank you, Ms. Sullivan. Yes, sir.
As stated prior to getting here, the vote that we made tonight was not successful. But a couple weeks ago, the Board directed the town manager to engage with the Sharapa family. That is still in place. We still want to buy Sharapa Farm, but the property. So that's still active.
So I have a question about that. So if Mr. Welch is successful at town meeting and rezones that property to, like, the densest zoning that there is in town, what do you think that's going to do? You think that's going to be able to price that property for the town to be able to buy it? I mean, the Sharapas don't have to sell that land to the town.
We know that.
They don't have to do it.
You're right. You can buy it.
You know? I mean, I want it for myself. I'm not a selfish person. I want it for the town. I think the town should have it. I mean, if I had that kind of money to buy it outright, maybe I would buy it for the town. If I hit the lottery tomorrow, maybe I would buy it for the town. But, you know, that's not the case. I would. I would, I'm serious. I have to play the lottery, which I don't, but if I did, I would definitely have that town, that land for the town, because there's nothing else. I mean, if you look back and you look at the land that North Reading bought for their residents, very similar situation, the farm right along the Ipswich River, and they bought that through the CPA. And look at it now. It's one of the most visited parks in this whole area. And it even has its own Yelp page. It's one of the highest-rated parks. And that's what they did. That's what they did for their town. And why can't we do that? I don't understand what the big, what the big thing is. We already have investment in that property. I think it's a darn shame that the Board can't see that.
But we can't see that. We've already directed the town manager to negotiate with them, to talk to them about it. Just this one avenue that Mr. McCoy asked for last week changed, but we still have asked the town manager to engage with the Sharapa family. So it's still ongoing. It's not a dead deal or a done deal as of tonight. So, the only thing that I asked them to do, and I asked them to change, and I changed my vote, was the word eminent domain. And they didn't want to, they didn't want to go forward. It didn't pass that way. Because I don't want my land taken. I want anyone else's land taken. And that's how I feel.
Well, I mean, they're going to sell it to somebody. I mean, it's not, it's not like they're, it's not like they're sitting on it and they're, you know, you're just taking somebody's land. I mean, eminent domain has, in the right place and the right time, it has, it has, it's a good thing. It's not a bad thing. We took eminent domain for the ball fields.
I've heard both sides of the stories, both sides of it being good and bad, and I've made my determination. And I'm not going to change it. So, can we end this discussion and move on, please?
I would say, Ms. Sullivan, I certainly respect your position, and, you know, I would imagine that you'll be present at, at ongoing meetings, especially over the next month or so, to re-articulate that position to all the audiences that are, that will be in attendance to hear it, and especially at town meeting. You know, you make some valid points, but, you know, I'm sorry that you don't see that some of us may not be, may not feel that it's warranted at this time to schedule a special town meeting just for this purpose. We have a town meeting, an annual town meeting that's scheduled. You know, if, if after that annual town meeting, another special town meeting gets scheduled, or we can engage in conversations and develop a mutually beneficial or a mutually agreeable price between the parties, then, then super. If we can get there, I think that would be to the benefit of the town to at least have the conversation. If the price tag is out of, out of reach, then with all due respect to anyone who really wants open space, I understand that passion, but at what, at what cost? And I guess that, those are questions to be determined, and ultimately will be determined by the voters of Wilmington. Ma'am, if I-
What happened with the, that the town had the first right of purchasing that because of all of the tax liens that they've bought for how many years?
Yeah, 61A.
So they, the property had a 61A designation on at least a portion of it, and the last time that that 61A designation existed was at the close of fiscal year 2014. So on June 30th of 14, that designation expired. The family did not choose to reapply. It's driven by their desire to seek that designation, which gives them a tax break. So while that designation was in effect, if they had received an offer to, to buy the property from somebody else, the town would have had the right of first refusal, and we could have matched that offer. But since that- But since that sixty-one A designation no longer exists, and it hasn't existed now since June thirtieth of two thousand fourteen, they're free to talk to anybody they choose to, and we've lost that right of first refusal.
Okay, so do you think maybe that that's why they pulled that about the special, the warrant, so that they don't have to, they can get tax breaks, so that, because then maybe they did get offers which were a lot more than what they would have gotten from the town? I mean, we forgo a lot of the taxes on that property.
Decades.
With the understanding that the town would get the first dibs. I don't think it's right, and people are talking about eminent domain. Well, I think in this case, it's warranted, because I think that was shady, that they pulled their warrant, and now all of a sudden, they have this mega deal that could go in, and they can make tons and tons of money. What about the rest of the town?
The town, the townspeople supported that property. It was a, it was a contract between the landowners and the town, with an understanding after, what, thirty years of chapter sixty-one A, and only, what, three or four years of not? And all because, I mean, did the town get proper notice?
The law is the law.
But did the town get proper notice?
National laws clearly state that if a person takes their property out of sixty-one A, there's a particular amount of time that they're legally able to sell to whoever they want to. So to slander the Sharapa family and say that they're shady, I think that's wrong for anybody to do.
This is the hardest thing I've ever had to say. Geez, ready? Mr. McDonald's right.
Let me just say this. I never said nothing about the Sharapas being shady, and I know I'm going to say something. Man, that's just not going to be happy. I said, I think the Sharapa family did what they had to do. I don't find any fault. I think somebody here in the town hall dropped the ball, because if that came out, and if I was notified when they came out in two thousand fourteen, I would have jumped on that thing to buy it immediately. I think somebody here in the town hall dropped the ball, and that's how I feel. I don't think Sharapa families did anything wrong. I think they want, let me, if I could finish.
You just did.
Yep. No, let me just, if I could just finish for a quick second. If I could just finish.
Mr. McCoy's convinced.
Once again, I think the Sharapa family's a wonderful family. I know them, some of them. I don't think they did anything wrong. They came to the town, somebody in the town, assessor's office or anybody, should have notified us, because I remember bringing this out, and I got it right here again, folks. I brought this here with me, two sixty-one A. I'll say it again. All right, let's see. I know I had a clip here somewhere. Just real quick, I'm just going to say it again, not to repeat it, but I did bring this back. I know that's when some members of the board thought, well, geez, maybe we can actually do something with this. You know, this is an affidavit signed by the Board Assessors on page one acknowledging the agricultural tax lien. And then obviously, right here, and I'm not saying the Sharapas did anything wrong. They are nice people, and obviously, they signed right here where it says, "Vicious option to purchase. I understand that the city or town has an option to purchase any classified land whenever I plan to sell or convey it to a residential karma, commercial karma, or industrial use. During a fiscal year, it is classified, or within a one full year after it's removed from classification. I must notify certified mail or hand delivery, the mayor, or city council, or the selectman, assessor, planning board, or conservation." And it goes on and on, talks about chapter sixty-one, and it states that the town, somewhere right in here, "I understand that I may not sell or convey the land until at least a hundred and twenty days after I provide notice that fully complies with the requirements of chapter sixty-one." They may very well have come in, did their job, and I'm not disputing it. Somebody in the assessor's office, conservation commission of the planning board, must have known about that. We're the executive branch. We should have been notified, and it didn't happen. And I'll say it again, somebody dropped the ball on this, as far as I'm concerned, in this town hall. We should have known about it, and I'll tell you right now, if we'd known about that within that, because it says it right there, within a hundred and twenty days, I would have jumped all over that, because for years, we always talked about buying it. It's just not, we're not trying to take this because of a rezoning. As far as I'm concerned, eminent domain, it's for the public good, not because there's a rezoning. We had a relationship for a long time, we talked about it for many years. This is something that didn't come up. But it's too late now. It's too late now.
And I will continue to defend the assessor's office, the conservation office, and my office in saying that there was no.
I didn't say your office, I said the planning board.
Well, the planning board, whoever you want to throw under the bus, there was no, there was no, there was no correspondence that I am aware of that came from the Sharapas stating after two thousand fourteen, or in two thousand fourteen, that they had an offer to purchase, which is the requirement that you've cited. We have never received correspondence to that effect. There was such correspondence that came to the board back in, I think it was two thousand seven or two thousand eight, and it was entertained, but within about two weeks, the offer was withdrawn. But I can categorically tell you that, to my best knowledge and belief, I have never seen any correspondence from the Sharapa family indicating they had a bona fide offer to sell, and that we had an opportunity, a hundred and twenty days, to exercise our rights. I think the Sharapa family is an upstanding family. It's unfortunate, they've been caught in the crossfire here, and I just think, you know, the fact that they've lived in town for, I guess, a hundred years or more, and now are being criticized because they're looking to do what any other person, I suspect, would do if they had a piece of property, and that is to, at some point in time, sell it for whatever purpose. I mean, that's, that's just the way our country operates. If you own a piece of property and you choose to sell it, you're entitled to sell it, to whomever you choose to sell it to. And it's just, it's unfortunate that they're being sullied because of their desire to simply do what anybody else in this community can do, and that is to sell your property, whether you have twenty thousand square feet of property, or whether you have sixty-two acres of your property.
I'm not saying, I'll say this, they're not in the crossfire. I'm saying it, they did nothing wrong. I think they did everything right. I don't know what else I can say.
I'm going to exercise my right as chairman of this, of this committee and shut down public comments. And as I stated at our last Board of Selectmen meeting, public comments is somewhat of an option here. We've certainly engaged the public here. I want to draw specific attention, I want to draw a specific attention to the Planning, Finance Committee public hearing, which will be scheduled, it is scheduled, for April twenty-fifth, two thousand eighteen. At April twenty-fifth, the public, the Planning and Finance public hearing, the public hearing is specifically stated, there'll be microphones in the audience, and everyone will have ample opportunity to voice concerns, questions, and really engage in conversation about the article or articles that appear on the special town meeting. So I thank you all for your attention to that, and I guess I will ask Jeff to run through important dates, which those important dates do now include the dates that are, that surround our now scheduled special town meeting.
So we have April second to the sixth as curbside collection of yard waste, brush drop-off Old Main Street, both on April fourth and April seventh. April seventh is also Rabies Clinic, Public Buildings Department, noon to two. We have April ninth is the last date to register to vote for the annual town election and town meeting. Town Clerk's Office, eight-thirty a.m. to eight p.m. April ninth, Board of Selectmen's next meeting, seven p.m. April tenth, Boston Bruins Foundation Be Fit First Responder Challenge Celebration Public Safety Building, ten-thirty a.m. to eleven-thirty a.m. Another brush drop-off on April eleventh, Old Main Street, eight a.m. to two p.m. Again, on the fourteenth, brush drop-off Old Main Street, nine a.m. to four p.m. The week of April seventeenth to the twenty-first is a curbside collection for yard waste. April eighteenth, brush drop-off, eight a.m. to two p.m. And again, on the twenty-first, nine a.m. to four p.m. April twenty-second, We're One Wilmington Run for Wilmington and the Kim Forte Walk. April twenty-third is a Board of Selectmen's meeting, right here, at seven p.m. April twenty-fifth, another brush drop-off Old Main Street, eight a.m. to two p.m. April twenty-fifth, as previously noted, is the Finance Committee Planning Board public hearing, Town Hall Auditorium, seven-thirty p.m. April twenty-eighth is the annual town election, polls open eight a.m. and run until eight p.m. April twenty-eighth, also another brush drop-off, nine a.m. to four p.m. April twenty-eighth through the thirtieth is Drug Takeback Public Safety Building, ten a.m. to two p.m. Sorry, that's April twenty-eighth. April thirtieth to the fourth is curbside collection of yard waste. May second is a brush drop-off, eight a.m. to two p.m. May fifth, brush drop-off, nine a.m. to four p.m. And then the annual town meeting on May fifth at the High School Auditorium, starting at ten-thirty a.m.
Thank you, Jeff. I inadvertently jumped over New Business Committee reports, so I don't, Greg, do you have anything you want to offer?
Good, thanks.
Mr. Kira.
No, I'm fine.
Nor do I.
Good.
I have two things, Mr. Chairman. Yesterday, during my holiday festivities at a family member's house here in Wilmington, across the street, down the street a little, was a house fire. I want to commend the Wilmington Fire Department and Chief Mahoney, and the great job that they did. They took down a house fire, the elderly people that were inside didn't even know they were on fire. A neighbor behind them called the Fire Department, and they took down a difficult situation very quickly. I was a witness of it, and I'm very proud to be a Wilmington resident in the Fire Department that we have in town, and they did a phenomenal job.
Awesome.
Secondly, secondly, I'd like to, in staying with, shouting out to a veteran, I talked to Lucy Megli today. Lyndon Spata is a young Marine veteran who just came home. He's been home for about a week. Lou says he's a great kid, wants to be a police officer someday, so welcome home, sir, and thank you for your service. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Yes, Mr. McCoy.
I apologize, I thought you were done at the first. I just want to say real quick, I believe Monday, traffic was backed up by the train station, by Eli's. I couldn't figure out what it was. Obviously, there was a traffic study, supposedly done by Mr. Neeland. I guess evidently, he did it on Friday when the registry was shut down. Fri, and when I went Monday, and I don't believe it was being done at that time, or whatever day, traffic was insane. I couldn't understand what it was, and I noticed we got like yellow tape, like almost like a crime scene, down at the horseshoe, and I know trucks, cars, they were parked all over the place. It was so unbearable to go by that you couldn't believe it. What kills me is that that traffic study was done on a Friday, when I'm sure he was the landlord, knowing full right that that place was going to shut down. So I'd just like to pass that on to you, Mr. Manager. I, you know, seriously, I think the Board of Appeals should really look at that traffic study, and I don't believe that thing was going on at that particular time, Mr. Manager. If you could write it down, it was insane, couldn't get by there. Unbelievable. Thank God I'm kind of retired, so I didn't mind taking my time, but, but anyway, but once again, Mr. Manager, right with your town-owned property, the horseshoe, they were parked everywhere. I'm wondering, we put up those lines, obviously, they must have damaged the field. I mean, damaged the property. I would assume, by seeing, it looks like a crime scene, like I say it nicely, I went to drop off my mail on my way to the meeting, and you have all the, what is it, the yellow tape or whatever, you know, you can't only drive the horseshoe.
Right. So I did get a call on that, Selectman Loud spoke to me. Indicating that the traffic, people were parked on the lawn there, they were parked within, inside the horseshoe and in various other locations. The police were notified to go down, and one of our officers had a conversation with the manager at the registry to get the vehicles moved. As you noted, there was fencing put up. There is, and for lack of a better term, informal arrangement that has been established where Mr. Neeland allows people to park on his property over at the registry when they're attending soccer games, and I have not had an issue with people parking on the town parking lot with the understanding that they are going to be parking within the parking area, not on the, on Route sixty-two, or not on the grass over there. I've had a conversation with Mr. Neeland, and also a representative from the registry, and need to follow up with the registry rep about making sure that doesn't happen again.
Right, no, I understand, so there's a little bit of trade, but could you at least notify the Board of Appeals that, I don't know if the traffic count was going on that particular day when the registry reopened, because if that was the case, it was just total chaos, traffic everywhere. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah, I just had a quick question, and not to spot you, Jeff, but has there been any talk on the Yentile Farm damage? Was there damage from a vehicle? We saw the, I saw it on the news, too, that the police had surveillance of a, of a car driving around the open field space.
Yes.
Do we have any report from Mike Woods?
I don't have any specifics. My understanding is that the police had some leads, but that's all I know at this point. I need to follow up on that.[1751.04]